I wonder if everyone could have a seat. In about 30 seconds, we'll start. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order, and I wonder if everyone could rise for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman O'Leary.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you. And as part of our continued movement toward more and more transparency, we do have public comment at every single meeting now. And we have two people who have signed up for public comment this evening. And the first is a familiar face, Alton Franklin.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. I just came back from a short trip over to Virginia. My little brother got married and also graduated from community college. You have times like that where it sort of rolls some things and you replay them back through your head. And family is very dear and special to me. However, I have a little sister. And I love her dearer than life itself. But she's got this really annoying habit. And it's one of the things that I seem to be seeing as a recurring theme as I go through life. I see a lot of people who do the same thing she does, which is when they say it, they've done it. And all they do is talk and nothing ever gets done because, "Well, I said I was going to." And there reaches a point to where it's beyond exasperating. I can't find an adjective to fit it. Because it just is to a point to where you go, "Look, just do it already." We've done this time and time again here in this chamber where we sit and talk and talk and talk and nothing gets done. I hear a lot about the budget. I don't see anything getting done. One of the few things that I haven't heard about, except with a few notable exceptions, is the idea that, well, maybe we could pare back somewhere. Instead of reaching into the citizen's pocket every time that we need a little bit more money, well, we could take a look around and go, "You know what? We could probably do that with 10% less money, with 5% less money." And it's amazing how much stuff like that adds up. But you've got to be willing to pick up the knife. You can't sit there and look at it and talk about it and then decide that it's been done. I finally reached a point with my little sister. I told her to get off her keister and do it. I'd like to repeat that message here because I do consider all people my brothers and sisters. And I love you enough to tell you, you're goofing up. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Martin.
My name is Patricia Martin. I live at 1114 East Grove Street. And I'd like to talk for a moment about the open house last Friday, where I was able to share my ideas with Alderman Scott Black, city manager David Hales, and several other participants. And I was especially happy to be able to discuss again my feelings about preventative measures against bullying and harassment. And I appreciate the support that I received. And I received an email the next day from Scott with information about lesson plans dealing with bullying, and it was much appreciated. As a result, I did additional online research and found at this time that there are conferences and meetings, both in the United States, a recent one focusing on children in Texas, the Dallas area, but literally around the world. Moreover, that such conferences not only deal with issues regarding children, but with adults. A conference in Milan, Italy just two weeks ago focusing on workplace bullying. And I quote, "It's intention to promote dignity and justice at work." There's also an international association on workplace bullying and harassment founded in Montreal in 2008 that includes 20 different countries, ranging from the United States to Australia. And Australia, by the way, seems to be a major center for research in this field. It is enlightening to see that these organizations realize that such behavior is not only offensive and harmful to the welfare of human beings, but also impedes the production and reputation of the workplace. Therefore, we in Bloomington are part of an international chain dealing with this issue, and I think we should be proud of this. And I must include Normal as well. I'm particularly grateful to Sally Heffernan, one of the Normal city managers, and Police Officer Amanda Street for their concern and for their support. And I did send Amanda a copy of the email that Scott gave me. I also want to thank all of you for my appointment to the beautification committee. And I have already made contact with Neville House, and he'll be doing some work there, too. So thank you again.
Thank you. Moving right along, we go to the consent agenda. And there are quite a few items on the consent agenda. And I would like to ask, are there any items that any member of the council would like to pull from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Alderman Black.
6N, please.
6N, as in north.
Nancy.
Nancy, okay. Alderman Fazini.
The next one, 6O.
6O, all right. Any others? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda then as presented with the exceptions of 6N and 6O?
I make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Fazini.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Schmidt. And I believe in terms of discussion, Alderman Fruen.
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the consent and the regular agenda, I have not received any monies from any of the parties or organizations listed. And I'd like to have that duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this point, let me go to timer and voting. And I'm not sure why this is not working. Am I doing something?
Nothing.
Is Scott Sprouls in the audience? I don't see. He's not here.
Craig, can you come up here a second? Scott Sprouls is on vacation this week. Craig Macbeth is our webmaster and...
I've selected it, but it's not doing it.
No, don't shut down.
Voting controls. There we go.
Yay, I don't know.
Take some millennial. Okay. And so, everyone should be able to vote right now.
I'm not on.
You're not on? Okay, now go ahead and try. Are you on? Okay.
We're good.
Perfect. Okay. Okay. Well, we've got another technological difficulty. It says it's showing on display, but it's not.
Don't shut down yet.
Well, I think in... It's a... But not on these. Okay, all right. Well, as you can see, this was really tight. But we have nine to zero. There are no nays to announce. All righty, thank you very much. Okay. Now, we do move to item 6N, as in Nancy. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Alderman Black because you pulled this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for a half second there, I thought we needed to put that Benny Hill theme song music on while we're trying to figure out the electronic voting.
You've heard of Benny Hill?
Yeah. Occasionally. Right for it. Every time. I did separate it to that one.
I've been sitting in airports for a long time. I'm ready to be punched.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Well, the reason I pulled this, and this is just for everybody's benefit, this is the discussion to put $38,000 into Panograph advertisements for the BCPA for marketing. Reason that I pulled this and I asked a number of questions to the staff, and thank you for getting back to me on those. Basically, my concern is, is the Panograph the right venue to be advertising? I know that I went to the BCPA opening season discussion and looking at their season for next year. It's a very impressive, diverse group of events. And we are trying to make a larger audience. And I'm wondering if there's better ways that we could spend this money to reach a broader base of people. Because I know personally that there's a number of shows with which I would go see, and I'm not aware of them until after they're over. And that might be my own fault, but I'd like to think that I will occasionally pay attention to things that are going on in the city. And so that worries me. And so I had asked for some data back, but I'm curious to kind of know some of the other council thoughts because I'm still unconvinced on this. And it just seems like a very high price for columnages for one type of marketing.
Now, if I could ask, in terms of your question, are you suggesting that we, one, bargain with the Panograph for a lower rate? Or is a Panograph and the old-fashioned way of advertising a newspaper something that you're suggesting is not good?
You're right. I should frame this a little bit better. So, yes, it's very expensive for one. But number two, it was clear that we didn't have a understanding as to how much was going to be allocated towards online advertisement versus print advertisement. And I would be curious to know if that's language we can put into the contract. And if not, why? And if... I'm just interested to hear some more of the council's thoughts on why they either support or don't support this. Because I'm still unconvinced that this is a good investment to making sure we get the word out about shows at the BCPA.
And if I follow up, then, if I could... Especially if we're going to be criticized, I'm also trying to figure out, what is it that you're suggesting that might be the alternative? That we do more just online?
Yes.
And promotion through social media, Facebook, whatever?
And I certainly understand that we shouldn't, you know, taking the Panograph out entirely because I know that there is a group of people who just read the Panograph in its print copy, and we shouldn't be neglecting those folks. But I guess the question that I'm struggling with is $38,000 the right level that that should be at? And can we diversify that? And how it fits overall in the BCPA marketing budget? And if that's been tweaked, or if we can look at that in a more targeted way? I don't know if that'd be a staff question or if I... I'd love to hear council weigh in.
I think you first started council, so I'm going to turn to Alderman Painter and then Alderman Sterns.
I agree with Scott. I don't think this is a very good deal. I was the marketing chair for Crossroads for three years, and we used the Panograph. Our print advertising cost quite a bit less, but it wasn't really that effective either. I'm also the marketing chair for the Illinois Prairie Community Foundation, and I wouldn't suggest that we advertise in the Panograph at all. I think there are other venues that are a lot more effective, that you get a lot better return on your money. I'm not saying that we shouldn't advertise at all with the Panograph. I think we should. I just don't think this is a very good deal.
Alderman Sterns?
Well, I'm inclined to agree with that and with Scott's comments. In fact, if Scott hadn't pulled this, I would have wanted to pull it. You know, the statements out there, "Well, if we don't spend this, what else will we do?" Well, maybe we could just not spend it. You know, maybe we could save some money. I mean, there's a crazy idea, but, you know. It is what it is. And I really... I'm a little bit confused. How much money did we spend last year? David, do you have any idea with the Panograph?
I'd have to ask John Kennedy, just for the BCPA.
Well, that's what this is. And I was going to ask what our total city, you know, budget is with the Panograph. Do you have any idea of that?
No, but the treasurer's report each fall does list how much we spend by vendor.
Right.
So it would be out there on the website in last year's...
That would include, like, legal notices that we have to.
Yes.
Right. And the treasurer's report and what have you. Right. But, I mean, the treasurer's report itself goes into the Panograph and costs money, obviously.
And that's mandated by state law. You can't get out from under that.
You know, I would agree about, we don't even know how much is online versus print. I don't know what the circulation is right now. But I think that people who are interested in live performances in Bloomington, you know, can certainly go to the website and are plugged in. And even if I'm not mistaken, get some emails, I think, from the BCPA. I certainly get them and know what the entire season is. So, yeah, this strikes me as a little excessive. You know, I just think the money we spend with the Panograph is just kind of concerning and questionable. And I'm not terribly supportive of this amount in that way. You know, to some extent, we go in, I think, the go section anyway. Because media has kind of a duty or something to kind of put out there what's going on in the city. So, I mean, they all seem to kind of care about that to some extent. So that's my view. Thank you.
Alderman Lauer, and then Schmidt and Fruen.
Without being too critical of this venue or the others, I do have, I guess I'll put it this way. I support self-sufficiency. And I would really like to see a lot more discussions from many of our venues about expenses like this. And yes, the Panograph, from a business standpoint in advertising, is extremely expensive, especially for our small business community. I can vouch for that. So, thanks.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt and then Fruen.
I just would appreciate hearing. I see Tina Salamone is here and Erin Mangin is here. They provided us with quite a bit of data about how they come to conclusions about where we advertise. So I would really appreciate the opportunity to hear from the people who know this venue, this whole marketing of cultural events the best.
Okay. I wonder if we could ask them to come forward?
Let me ask John Kennedy. Do you want to bring whoever you want up here to...
Oh, Tina.
And can I just say, too, Alderman Schmidt, as you indicated, we have a little over two pages of, I think, some very valuable information. I think this is very unusual to see this kind of analysis of any department on a line item expenditure. So I commend them. And hopefully, each one of you have had a chance to review that and that analysis they put together just today. So, John.
Thank you. Thank you, David. I'll just make a couple of quick comments, and I'm going to bring up our marketing manager to handle more of the details. But first of all, this is only one way that we market our shows, through the Panograph. We do extensive free advertising through social media. We do some paid advertising through social media. We use radio advertising. We have regular radio spots that we go on that are free. And the Panograph go section does cover a high percentage of our shows as well. Additionally, the difference between print and online advertising is decided upon on a show-by-show basis, depending on the target market. A lot of our events, if they have an older demographic, the chances are the Panograph's going to reach them better than social media. So if there's an event that's going to reach a younger demographic, then we're going to go more towards social media and other online-type advertising. So with that, I'd like to bring up Erin Mangin, our marketing manager. She's been here just one year now. And so it might be the first time you've had a chance to meet her. But I'll bring Erin up to help with more details.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. As John mentioned...
You're quite a bit taller than I am. Go ahead.
That's right. Oh, I can move that. As John mentioned, the Panograph is just one piece of many mediums that we leverage when we market our shows at the BCPA. Depending on what the show is, who the artist is, what genre, who we think will buy tickets to that show, we use that information to decide how we are going to market our show and what that marketing mix is. However, the Panograph is a consistent source of advertising for us, and it is an important one. We know that because our patrons tell us that they learn about our shows through the Panograph. We know that because we ask them. We ask them in two different ways, through the purchase process. First, at point of sale, we ask them when they're purchasing tickets with us, "How did you hear about the show?" We also ask them after the show, with a post-show survey, "How did you hear about the show?" We've found through this data that the Panograph is actually one of the most mentioned sources for which people learn about our shows at the BCPA. So that is actually only second to our season brochure, which we develop and put out upon the season announcement. So that's some significant data that we really take into consideration when we make the decision to purchase advertising with the Panograph. Now, that's one part of it. The second part of it is, well, the online advertising. And yes, we know that that advertising speaks to our current customer. So you may ask, "Don't we want to reach new customers?" Well, yes, we absolutely do. I, as a millennial myself, understand that online is where a lot of our new audience is looking for their news, their information. So we are taking action to reach them there. As John said, we do social media advertising, not just organic, but we also do paid social media advertising. We've really bumped up our email marketing. We do a lot of email marketing to supplement that Panograph advertising. We also have changed something a little bit in the contract this year. Last year, we primarily did only print runs with the Panograph, understanding that we are looking to reach new audiences. We are looking to grow. We have actually changed our contract. So now, depending on the show, we can choose. Well, is this show going to reach an older demographic that will read the Panograph, the print version? Well, then, we can advertise only print. If we're looking to reach a younger demographic with maybe a Sebastian Bach or a Casey Abrams, then we can use all those dollars to market online. So we have considered that. We have considered the evolution of marketing through print and digital forms when we reviewed this contract. We still feel it is a very valuable contract to us in marketing. And that is why we choose to do that.
Other questions?
Can I weigh in with one?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. Absolutely the answer and clarification that I'm looking for. But I guess my follow-up would be, how is $38,000 the determined number that we got to?
Sure. Well, consider that we're marketing 35-plus shows. So if you break that down among the 38,000, that's actually very reasonable for paid advertising. Each run that we are paying for has three different runs. We primarily run on the go section, Thursday, the entertainment section. We also run on Sunday, which is usually the highest readership. And then we have one off day if we kind of want to make sure that we're staying top of mind for people. And usually, that is a weekday.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Alderman Fruen was next, and then Maboka, and then Alderman Sterns.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate the discussion we're having. I think I also have questions sometimes about, how do we advertise? How do we market? We have a lot of different generations we're trying to reach. But I think when it comes down to it, you're the staff. You've had the experience. You're the managers. And I think that rather than manage it tonight on a line item, I think we're better served more in line with what Kevin was saying, that if we want to look at marketing and advertising, let's look at it in a bigger picture on a different time. Because we've got other venues, whether it's the Coliseum, Parks and Recreation. You know, we still have our booklet, our hard copy booklet in Parks and Recreation. So we've got a history of what's worked. We've got staff that we rely on. And I think that I would support this. It's been good discussion. It kind of sends a message. The council is a little cautious on what we're doing here. Let's look at it the next few months and see where we go from here. But I think it's a bigger discussion, and a better night is more appropriate than tonight.
Let's see. Alderman O'Leary and then Sterns.
Thank you. Well, I guess one of the questions that I had you actually answered because I was going to ask, how many shows do you have? And when you look at it, you know, $38,000 might not seem like a lot. And if you also look at the amount of advertising that you do online as well, so that number could be, in comparison, not as significant as it might seem when you look at $38,000. I know $38,000 sounds like a lot initially, but based on what you do, it could be a little bit less. And I do some of this sort of programming at ISU as well. So I understand it. It's not an exact science. I mean, for everything that you do, any given day, you could always find somebody, for one reason or another, who never reads the Panograph. And then all of a sudden, they decide they're going to read it that day. And that's how they find out about the show. So it's not an exact science. And I've been pretty impressed with the answers that you provided for us. It seems like you're making a great effort to really target and find out how are people finding out about the shows and what's the best medium for us to advertise. So thank you.
Alderman Sterns and then Painter.
Yeah, thank you very much. You did a great job of that, explaining it. What is the total advertising budget for the BCPA? What's the total?
It's a little over $70,000.
So this is well over half of the budget. Another question is, how do you... You know, when, if you bring a show in that's noteworthy, and obviously, you do, doesn't the media just want to cover that? And at what point, isn't there a story about it? And so what are we paying for? In addition, I mean, I'm a little bit confused about where the news coverage of a show comes in versus, you know, what we've actually paid for.
That's a great question. News coverage sometimes happens, sometimes does not. It depends on the writer's gauge of whether the community is interested in that artist or if there's a story there. Sometimes, if we have shows that come back for a second time, there's not as much interest in covering that. So basically, it's not a guarantee. Paid advertising is a guaranteed placement where we want it to reach, hopefully, the audiences that we want it.
And you control the message.
Exactly.
Let's see. Alderman... You already were on... Alderman Painter.
I was just going to add some. That's okay.
Alderman Painter.
Just one more question. How big are these ads?
They are, I believe, in eight inches. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact dimensions, but about this big and about this thin. It's in the contract.
So like eight by four or something like that?
That's a size people would notice. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks. Alderman O'Leary, and then I will ask for a motion so we can move forward.
Well, I want to thank Scott for bringing it up because I think everybody's learning something really valuable today[1685.82] something really valuable today about how your world operates. And I think Judy's question, that was a very good question about, you know, don't they just cover the story? Why don't they just cover the story? Because I've ran into similar situations at ISU, and it really depends. You know, one, it depends on the person who's writing the story, if they're interested in it, if the editor is interested in it. But it also depends on what's going on at the same time. So we've had, at ISU, a number of people who were really well-known coming to the campus, and we thought, this will be a fantastic story. It's going to be in the paper for sure. But it happened at a time where a lot of stuff was happening, and there just wasn't enough space in the pantograph to cover it.
Or you get it afterwards.
Right.
You get the story after they perform.
The day after, you know? So that's just the way it works, so.
Okay. Alderman Fazini, are you moving?
I have a comment, and then I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'm looking out here, and there are about 20 people in the audience, and I know one for sure who does not have email. I live in a 13 house subdivision. One of the 13 does not have email. So if the ratio holds, one out of 15 or 20 people in town don't have email, so they're looking to the paper, period. And now I'll make the motion.
And what is the motion?
The motion is that we accept what was presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
A second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Okay, and we should be able to vote? Yep, it looks like it's happening here. Okay. Oh, that's right. There we go. The motion carries seven to two. Madam Clerk, would you announce the two nays?
The nays are Alderman Sterns and Painter.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now we move on to, and I will turn to, I believe it was Alderman Fazini. Did you pull item six?
Oh.
Oh?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I pulled that because I didn't agree with the staff response to my question concerning the reasons for the apprenticeship program being in the best interest of the city. I'll quote part of the answer, is this helps increase the quality of work, which it may, and is not a hindrance on bidding, which I think it is. So I don't agree with having this in the recommendation that we specifically require this.
So if my, are you suggesting that we, you just want to make an amendment to this, or you don't want us to pass the prevailing wage resolution?
I don't want us to pass the prevailing wage resolution as is presented. I'd rather delay it or vote against it. I'm amenable to delaying it and having more research on whether or not it really is or is not a hindrance to the bidding and whatever the history we've had on this in the past because we have had history.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do at this point in this, entertain a motion, either to accept this or if you want to, a motion to table it to the next meeting, we can proceed either.
I'd make a motion, we table it to the next meeting.
Okay, and then, did you want to restate the concern that you had?
That the, that this is not a hindrance to the bidding. I think it is.
Okay. Is there a second for this motion to delay it to the next meeting?
I will second that, and I also had raised this question, and if I did not have such a strong memory of our discussing this and taking this off the table as part of our prevailing wage agreement, you know, I might not have this reaction, but I think Alderman Sage, you also have something of the same recollection, no or yes?
Maybe not specifically about the apprentice aspect. I recall the conversation was about changing the dollar amounts associated with it. But I do recall some conversation about the inclusion of the apprentice clause in there. But my recollection is there was more of a primary focus on making changes to the dollar amount, and that was primarily to promote a more competitive bidding process, which is similar to what I think Rob is trying to say, too. I mean, I think what Rob is trying to say is, we want something that promotes a competitive bidding process. I don't want to put words in Rob's mouth, but at least that's what I'm, what you're suggesting.
Okay, City Manager David Hales.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to clarify. It's, we're not saying the staff believes that. The answer is, arguments have been made in the past that this helps increase quality of work and that advocates of such language. I think basically what you would find is the Trades and Labor Council would be a strong advocate for and make the arguments to keep the apprentice language in and keep the dollar amounts lower. However, past councils, and I think in 2009 when I came, raised the dollar. They didn't remove the apprenticeship language, but they raised that from 25 to 100,000. So if you're looking for staff to come up with the objective, you know, pros and cons, I don't know if we can do that because, you know, there is two philosophies out there. And we can certainly give a rundown and, you know, give the two prevailing thoughts on this a chance. But again, we were just trying to reiterate what advocates for and against have raised in the way of arguments, not necessarily that it's staff's belief that that is the case.
Alderman Fruehn.
Well, let me chime in on my recollection. I remember the change from 25 to 100. I also remember the argument, and I remember people coming to the podium that asked, you're precluding some perhaps very qualified contractors from being able to bid when you have limitations like this on a dollar limitation. So I think that's the real question as time has gone by. The prevailing wage is going to change every year, and we say that on the township and the council every year. The issue here is really, are we excluding people from bidding on those contracts above $100,000 that might not have an apprenticeship program? That's the gist of it, right? So I think that ought to be revisited, and maybe without research, but as a council, do we feel like that differentiation should be put in there? I do remember council discussion about the apprenticeship program and whether it should be in or out, in addition to discussion about the dollar amount.
Okay. Well, at this point, we have a motion on the floor, which is to table this to the next meeting for two weeks, or to the next meeting. Yes, City Manager Hales.
Mayor, corporate counsel just reminded me, there is a statutory requirement that in June of each year, the governing board adopt this resolution. Just throw out one option. One option, the council could adopt the resolution without the apprenticeship language, so at least we get the resolution passed, and then we could come back with an amendment, together with additional information as to whether or not you would want to amend it going forward for the remainder part of the year. Just a thought, and corporate counsel can, you know, respond to any other questions you have, similar to that.
I'm okay to adjust the motion to, rather than table that we just simply eliminate the apprenticeship at this stage and approve the motion as presented without the apprenticeship because of the regulatory requirement.
And is a second real?
And I'm comfortable doing that.
Okay. And so at this point, we will vote on this substitute motion. The only concern that I would have is I'd want to find out a little bit more from some of our other cities and other communities. What are some of the benefits of having an apprenticeship program? I can imagine that they're there. I don't know what the range of contracts would be, so that would be something personally I'd want to find out, you know, the repercussions of. Okay.
So at this point, I'm sorry. Alderman. I'm sorry, I'm unclear now. So we vote on this, and if it gets voted no, the original staff recommendation would be on the table at that point for a motion.
If this is voted down, then that would be in order. We could consider a motion. We still don't have a motion for the staff's recommendation.
Right.
We have an alternative motion, which would be to accept this, but not the, not the apprenticeship program necessarily.
So I'm a little murky on the timeline on when we would revisit this. I mean, is there a statutory requirement that we'd have, we could come back to it a month, two months, six months down the road?
Help, Jeff.
Yeah, you, once you approve it, if it's approved as presented at this meeting, would be changed. You could come back at the next meeting with an amendment to add this into the prevailing wage.
Could I ask, maybe you go two meetings, because...
Well, there was no time certain to the motion. So at this point, we're not limited by that. Alderman Black, did you have a follow-up? No. Okay. All right, well, then if we vote on this, the vote on this would be to support Alderman Fazini, the Fazini and Schmidt proposal to accept the prevailing wage language, but not the apprenticeship program. Everybody, cool, okay. Please. Okay. Wow, now we have it on everything. We have eight ayes and one nay, the motion carries. Alderman, oh, excuse me.
Alderman Black is our long nay.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move right along to our regular agenda, and our regular agenda is item 7A, application of GKC Theaters, also known as Carmike Palace Cinema 10, located at 415 Detroit, for an EAS, it's Entertainment Liquor License, which allows the sale of all types of alcohol by glass consumption on the premises seven days a week. And just to, as a quick backdrop, the Liquor Commission did go through this, and we had some extensive questions, and we have the people, corporate counsel and other representatives, Carmike are here this evening, they were here at the Liquor Commission. Some of the concerns that the Liquor Commission asked about were, we had few concerns after we asked questions. We said, okay, is this a situation where somebody's going to pass a beer in the dark? And it was clear, the lighting would be different, the seating arrangements would be fundamentally different, they'd roughly cut the number of seats they have in half, and there would also be additional staffing, and there would be wristbands. And so we were certainly, any of our concerns were alleviated, at least the Liquor Commission was, from that particular standpoint. And obviously, from the standpoint of mayor, not just a liquor commissioner, I'd like a company to invest 3 to 6 million dollars in a facility on our east side. And this would be, as I understand, the only facility, the first in the state of Illinois that Carmike operates. There are some in the suburbs of Chicago that are operated by other theaters, and some in the suburbs of St. Louis and other places. And this is a model that I guess the idea would be to try to bring back family night. People can go out, not just drop off the kids, but that that was the way that it was presented to the Liquor Commission. And so without any further ado, I will ask first of all, if there is, for discussion purposes, if there is a motion to approve and a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented, and then I have comments after.
Right, of course. There's a motion on the floor, then, is there a second?
All second.
A second, motion by Fazini, Alderman Fazini, seconded by Alderman Black. Now, who would like to speak to this? Let's see, I have Fazini, Schmidt, Sterns.
Thank everybody.
Painter, almost, oh, okay. All right, well, then, let's see. We will, I'll give everybody, try to take about a minute and a half to two minutes as a flexible target. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Alderman Fazini, and then I'll go to Alderman Fruehn because sometimes he gets left out and turns last, and I'll come around this way.
Thank you. You already mentioned that the number of seats is going to be about half what it is now. The theaters will currently go from 48 to 140, 104 seats. They have 25 employees now, they're looking to go to almost 100. They would actually close the theater for four months. That's a major revenue loss, and they're all in on this. They're saying, we picked you as the first place in the state of Illinois, and we want to try this experiment because we think it's a good business plan and you're the place to do it. And I think we ought to be proud of the fact that we're chosen to spend 3 to 6 million dollars, and they're willing to close their theater and then increase the number of employees. Rob Lehman, Vice President from their main office in Columbus, Georgia, and Harlan Powell, their attorney from Chicago, were at the meeting for the Liquor Commission. And along with them tonight is Sue Miller from their Rosemont office, who's a, Rosemont Theater, who's the general manager. They're here to answer any questions we have, so if we have them and we can't answer them ourselves, they're right here.
Okay. Alderman Fruehn.
Mayor, thanks, and this makes sense that I go early in the conversation here because I'm very neutral on this, and I really value listening to others in the next couple of minutes. But I, what I'm looking for is consistency and philosophy among us because we've talked about liquor in theaters before, maybe in a different council setting. We've talked about liquor downtown, different issues, college bars, theater, entertainment. We've got the Castle Theater, we've got people drinking at sporting events, ISU athletic events, Coliseum, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know that we have this magical formula that it's this way across the board, but it is progressive. And I was reminded by my constituency this weekend, which consists of one son, and he said, I guess I got to come clean. I'm not going to tell you which one. He basically said, Dad, if they want to bring alcohol in the theater, they do it now. Put a pint in their bottle, in their pocket, get their Diet Coke or whatever, and mix it together. So, you know, we're never going to prevent everything, and so I think that's what I'm concerned about is management of this issue, so I'd like to hear what everybody's going to say about that.
I think, based on what I've heard, with better lighting and the dramatic increase in staffing, I think the likelihood of somebody bringing in a pint and doing that is decreased under this particular model. And especially with reduced staffing and other things and wristbands, I mean, so that might be a side bend, that's not a reason for us to approve it. Just also to clarify, in the past, the, again, before I was mayor, but from what I understand from the historic record and talking to other council members, that Wehrenberg had asked for a possibility, but they were, it was a different business model. They were also interested in basically selling your beer and wine and whatever along with your popcorn. This is a different kind of business model. And we also have, just to remind everybody, of course, we've cleaned up our liquor laws, and we've got this entertainment license, and the stuff is fairly tight. And to be really honest, if we have people who don't abide by our laws, I'm not afraid to give them a record fine, and I'm not afraid to shut them down if they're violating the law. Anyway, Alderwoman Schmidt.
I have questions just based on phone calls that I've received. I've received a few calls of inquiry and concern, one having to do with video gaming and whether we would be creating an environment where the first thing that people see, particularly if it's family night, is to walk into something that more or less looks like a bar, where there's video machines and a bar set up, and, you know, is that where you want to take your kids to go see Frozen or whatever? And so maybe we could talk about that a little bit. And then I think I have some of the same kinds of, not concerns, but interest in making sure that we have our, our management of our licenses is done right. And I will reflect on various circumstances in downtown Bloomington where people said, yeah, 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 I'm going to be a restaurant. And then they're a restaurant until X, you know, nine o'clock at night, and then suddenly they're not a restaurant anymore. And, you know, do we, do we have the, a way of actually looking at receipts and sort of doing spot checking from time to time? I have, I have very little doubt that this is going to be managed well, planned well. Nobody's going to put 3 to 6 million dollars on the line without really thinking about what they're doing. So I, you know, that's, I'm not, I'm not asking about them so much as I'm asking about us and what we're going to do to make sure that this is what we think it's going to be one or two years from now.
Right. Well, we do have, with the newly restructured liquor ordinances, we've got clear definitions because we can't, we won't have anybody claiming they're a restaurant because they had $186,000 of video poker, which is what we had before, right? It's clear. A restaurant, you serve food, a majority of receipts, boom. The way that things are laid out now, we've increased the likelihood that we got to give due process, but we can pull liquor licenses if people aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. And so that, that we certainly streamlined. So anyway, I don't know if that helps a little bit in terms of the definitions. So I'm just going to keep going around since everybody wants, Alderwoman Painter.
I got a couple of calls today, too, and they were very concerned that there are increasingly few places where alcohol isn't served. And the other concern was about the food part because there's already food at the movie theaters now, but really? I'm sure that it happens, but I've never seen anybody get a piece of pizza or a hot dog or ice cream and take it into the movies. Usually it's just popcorn. So, so what kind of food is going to be served?
It's a full, full dinner, all different kinds of options. Basically, sit-down dinner, maybe, I think I made the analogy, that may not be fair to Fridays. I mean, you'd have a variety of different types of, if you want to come forward.
I'd suggest we suspend the rules so that they can talk for five minutes and probably answer all the questions that are going to come up.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't know that we necessarily have to do that if we, we can, we go to department heads and other resource people. So I don't know that's necessarily a suspending rules.
An extension of staff, in other words, is what you're suggesting.
Yes, if you'd come forward. Okay. I think it's a great question. And just as a clarification, obviously, there are a lot of places. You can get beer and wine. In fact, my kid, was it, my kids were little at Chuck E. Cheese, and I needed the beer and wine. Yeah, and then the pizza as well, all right. I'm not supposed to make smirking remarks about pizza of anybody in Bloomington, but yeah, it wasn't the best. Sorry, go ahead.
Why don't you identify yourself with your title?
Excuse me, sir. Thank you. My name is Harlan Powell. I'm the attorney for Carmike Theaters. Thank you for having us this evening. I have with me Rob Lehman. He's the Vice President of Food and Beverage at the corporate offices. And also Susan Miller, who is, as you mentioned, the manager of the Rosemont Theater. She's here tonight because that theater also has a restaurant attendant to the actual theater facility, and she can speak to some of their experiences there. But I think, Rob, if you want to touch base on the full range of menu options, I think that would be the place to start.
We would do a full menu, appetizers. We're not going to go to steaks. It's going to be more of a, since you're eating in an auditorium, we don't want you trying to cut a steak, but we'll put chicken, we'll put salads, we'll have desserts, of course. So it's, it's basically a restaurant that shows movies. So that's, that's what, minus the steak, of course, but...
Would there be a limit on how many alcoholic beverages? Would there be a limit on how many alcoholic beverages they could purchase?
That would be something that we would consider.
And just so you, you're clear on the concept, this is not a situation where somebody would be able to walk up to the counter and say, "I would like a pitcher and six glasses." If they would like an adult beverage, it's basically one individual, one ID, one beverage. The mayor alluded to the fact that there are in-house ushers at all times during the movie itself, so if somebody did want an additional entree, dessert, beverage, alcoholic or otherwise, there's a button, the waiter or waitress comes and serves them tableside. So the movie isn't interrupted, their experience isn't interrupted, but at the same time, there's constant monitoring of what's actually happening within the confines of the theater.
Thank you.
Alderman Sterns, next.
I've, I've got two or three questions and then I've got a general comment. Sorry. I hit it twice, sorry about that. Two or three questions and then a, a comment, 'cause I know our time is kind of limited. What is the possibility because of the liquor license of having video gaming in the theater?
Zero.
Oh, that, how, how is that set up? I mean, is that already, how is that?
There's absolutely, there's been no discussion at the corporate level of any desire in any state to engage in gaming. Illinois obviously has recently shuffled the deck on, on that issue, so to speak. But that has not changed Carmike's approach. This is not their business concept.
Seems like it would be possible conceivably. I mean, it seems like, but you're saying no, but, okay, that's fine.
No, and, and again, I don't wanna speak to what may happen a hundred years from now, ten years from now, what have you.
Right, sure, absolutely. And, and you can't.
Yeah.
But what would, okay, so the patron would be obviously allowed to take the beverage, the beer or whatever, into the theater, is that correct?
Yes.
And then in, in terms of the monitoring, I understand you're totally, you know, all about that and such, but I'm a little bit confused about how a patron, obviously they're cus, they're all customers, you know, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, whatever, how you would go about actually, you know, I don't want you apprehending, but dealing with a even maybe a little bit unruly eighteen or nineteen-year-old who was consuming and would you need the assistance of, I know the concept of a hireback of our police department was mentioned, so would that be kind of part of that?
In other jurisdictions, there are similar theater concepts in California currently, for example, off-duty police officers at the request of the city council or, you know, if it's just felt like that's an additional security element that's needed, are on staff. And I apologize 'cause I actually meant to check your codes before coming here tonight, so I don't know if it's permitted under local code. If it were, I would envision.
Yeah, hirebacks at Wehrenberg.
Okay. Then yes, that would certainly be part of the mix here.
Okay. And I, I'll just go ahead and make, make my comment now. And it seems like, you know, that would be definitely a, a good concept, 'cause I can't imagine, you're not going, you know, I wouldn't think you would want to apprehend your, your customers, I mean, they're, after all, they're paying customers. But, and, and I don't know that our police department, as far as hireback, I don't, I don't know how much really capacity we really have. But having, having said that, I just, I just wanna make my position very clear on this from the constituents who have emailed, called, whatever. To me, this, this is a very sad day in Bloomington. It is not Bloomington. It, it just, it's really sad that we can't have a venue, you know, as we always have with the movies, that doesn't have to involve alcohol, you know, like everything else does. And there, there have been so many concerns locally, I mean, I, I realize that laws have been tightened and the Liquor Commission is very aggressive now, and yet, look at our downtown, you know, some of the videos we get, some of the, just driving through, it's, it's just deeply, deeply concerning to me, the dangers and the concerns. So I, I just, I just can't support, nothing to do at all with your theater, I'm sure it's a wonderful theater and would love to see you spend the money. Liquor is extremely profitable, so it doesn't surprise me at all that, you know, there would be a huge investment, I think it'd be worth it probably. But I, I don't think it's a good thing to open these gates and I definitely think that every theater in Bloomington, certainly our other theaters, would want it and I can't imagine picking and choosing here, so it's opening floodgates and I, I just, I think it's sad for our kids, our children, our teenagers, that they can't go to a venue and not see anyone consuming alcohol.
Alderman Miller-Lompe.
Thank you. This is a very interesting concept and I think I would've liked to see the, the floor plan. I, I haven't seen it, do we have it anywhere?
It was described.
It was described, okay. 'Cause I, I think for me, I, it's important for me to visualize how things are going to flow, you know, how are people gonna move from one place to, to another place? 'Cause I'm, when you say theater, I think that one of the things that you're battling here is perception. People are used to a traditional idea of, of a theater and, and especially a place that's, where you have a lot of sixteen, fifteen, you know, teenagers, basically, who are walking in and out. So I, I'm trying to visualize how this thing is going to work, how you're going to prevent a sixteen or seventeen-year-old with their friends, you know, or an adult, you know, giving them alcohol or something, thinking worst-case scenario.
Well, these are both excellent points that you raise and I think it's important to kind of go back a, a couple steps. The, the genesis of this concept, I think, actually speaks very directly to Alderman Stern's point. There has been a trend in the movie industry going back a generation where, you know, newer forms of technology are available, different forms of technology are available. So the traditional notion of a movie theater going and having a family night out has been essentially under assault for many, many years. You have Netflix, you have, you know, any number of different entertainment platforms, all competing for the youth market, all competing for the family entertainment dollar. This concept is designed to basically give the family the option. Instead of dropping the kids off and having mom and dad go about their business somewhere else, the entire family can have a meal, have dinner, either in the theater or in the restaurant outside the theater, with or without an adult beverage. That's not something that is required. So this is an effort on the part of Carmike to bring the family, bring the family unit as a whole, back to that movie-going experience. You have to acknowledge, however, that this is the 21st century and while you're competing with all these different platforms, in order to get the customer's attention, in order to retain their attention and ultimately get them to choose to spend their money at this theater, you have to offer something new, something different. So this would be that something new, something different. That would be, again, there's the restaurant that you can come, you can decide to sit there while your kids watch an age-appropriate film, have dinner, wait for them, pick them up, off you go. You can go and you can have your dinner in the theater. Part of the renovation here does contemplate a complete retrofit of the sound system that will be state-of-the-art, a retrofit of the projection system that will now also be state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art 3D. This is essentially, this will be, there will be nothing like it in the city of Bloomington, so we hope that that will be an attraction. Now, how do you monitor? How do you make sure that this is the family-friendly environment that you want? There are multiple, multiple levels of control here. For example, if you decide to dine in the restaurant, I think it's appropriate to think of this as a typical restaurant environment, no different than any other restaurant that you would go to tonight after you leave council chambers. All these servers are Basset-trained, all the servers are subject to additional in-house training developed by Carmike. Everybody is trained to understand who should have the opportunity to order an adult beverage and who should not. Everybody will be trained in terms of IDs. I'd mentioned previously, the one ID, one order, one drink concept, that's proven to be very effective. Additionally, any alcoholic beverage will be served in distinctive glassware, so a glass of water will not look anything like a glass of wine, a glass of beer, or something like that. In, in theater service, wristbands, in addition to what we've just spoken about, plus the inclusion of the ushers and outside security. So we think this can be a very effectively monitored situation. Ms. Miller here, as, as mentioned before, is the manager of the Rosemont Theater. Slightly different concept, not quite as, as in-depth as what we're talking about now, but in the eight months or so that Carmike has owned and operated that theater, they also use off-duty officers as additional security when necessary. This is a very high-volume location, they've had zero issues, zero problems whatsoever. And I can, I can also say that nationwide Carmike has had no problems with this.
We'll move to Alderman Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and wanna just take a, just a couple of seconds and say, one reason why I'm at least intrigued in this is, is given the performance of the Liquor Commission the past year. The previous two or three years to that, I did not have a lot of confidence in the Liquor Commission and the ability to enforce ordinances and that type of thing. So appreciate the work done by the Liquor Commission since you've been there. So you have no floor plan, but I'm sure you have a concept drawing of some kind, right? It seems to me that would've been appropriate to share, to, to make available.
And I do apologize, when we last met with the, the Liquor Commissioner, that information had not yet been, we hadn't gotten that far. But I can tell you that the, the redesign of the theater, the reason for taking out the half the seats is to accommodate a much more comfortable experience. We're talking about very plush captain's chairs, reclining chairs, you know, the, the things that, that today's audience are really asking for.
But, but for light of sight, to follow up on Imbocca's point, that's something that could be shared with the council.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right? And appreciate you mentioning your approach to how you're gonna handle over-serving and the wristbands and the underage drinking. I'm gonna follow up on the question that Judy asked, 'cause, 'cause I, I guess I wanna ask it in a different way. Does, does this license or does what we're giving to, to the establishment here, does that give you the ability to put video gaming in without having to come back to the city council to ask? Whether, I know your business decision now is not to do that. I just wanna kind of, kind of fully resolve and run that into a corner, right? I mean, you, you could do that if, if you decided to at some point in the future, I, I understand, you know, I don't, I don't mean to make you guys almost pass out here by, by, you know, inferring that you're gonna do that. I, I'm just trying to understand. Do we have some control over the video game?
If they put it in, we can pull it.
Okay.
It'd be a different model now.
We show movies, that's what we're good at, that's what we do.
Yeah, and I feel nothing but love for you, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand here, okay? What, in your business model, what percentage of your receipts do you estimate to be alcohol?
That's an excellent question and I've got a couple of different answers. The model in other jurisdictions has run between five percent and twenty percent. And I asked for some explanation as to why there was that range of difference, you know, between one location and another, and I unfortunately don't have an answer. I, I don't know why there's that wide range. So I can tell you, our estimate, as I stand here today, would be somewhere between five percent and twenty percent.
So you're prepared to say no more than twenty percent?
I don't know that I can say no more, I'm just saying based upon experience in other, other jurisdictions. I can tell you that we intend on being a full-service restaurant and a movie theater with the service of alcoholic beverages being secondary to that.
So you're gonna invest tens of millions of dollars without being able to fully identify what your revenue stream is coming back?
Well, no, that's a different question than you asked.
Okay.
You asked, would I guarantee that it would be twenty percent and I can't guarantee that it will.
And just, just to remind you on this, if, for the entertainment license, alcohol has to be under forty, so it's not even if it's under fifty. So if it, if it did, then we'd have another means, under our current ordinances, to pull it.
Okay. And, and then, and, and Mayor, I don't know when it, when it would be appropriate to ask this question, but I, I am, at least wanna have some awareness for how we intend, how the Liquor Commissioner is, how, how the council intends to handle other venues coming to us.
Right, well, I mean, I think that this, I think there's total consistency unless, you know, we do some, do something different. And that is, if somebody else wants to invest three or six million dollars in a new business model, we'll consider that too. If, let's say Wehrenberg, we've got another, if they wanted to come to us, that's a different story than, than what they're talking about here. At least what I understand, they asked back in '07 or so, is they wanted to sell beer with their popcorn.
Right.
Right? Now, if they did that, then we need to have certain kinds of protections to, to understand what's gonna happen. I mean, they're not talking about improved lighting, different staffing, whole different model, putting in a restaurant, I mean, there's all kinds of things that, that are, that are different here. That doesn't mean that necessarily the council, I haven't even talked to you all, but whether necessarily you'd be hostile to that situation depending on whether they had wristbands or I don't know what we would do.
Right.
But that, that'd be different. Again, you can, it, it's similar to, and it's not so much similar to Chuck E. Cheese, where, but it is probably close to the Castle Theater back in '02, '03, '04, '05. I remember 'cause they served Foster's, so I could go there and watch movies with my kids and, and, and sit in, you know, sofas, basically, but unfortunately, that business model didn't work for them in a single theater.
And that was, that was Chuck E. Cheese's loss at that point, right? When you, and, and then finally, just from kind of an operational impact, again, when we've had a fair number of conversations these past few months about police hireback, do we anticipate any adverse impact by creating another larger hireback situation here? Is that gonna impact our police force in any way? I'm just, just kinda curious.
I mean, if it's comparative, it, it's, it's something that they would do as of overtime, we can cross that bridge when we come to it if, if it seems like they want it.
Again, I'm just interested from, from the, you know, perhaps from the chief's perspective, do we anticipate that, that this would, would put any additional stress on our, on our police force, our ability to be able to, to.
Sorry, Alderman Sage, I misunderstood.
Yeah. That would be very hard to estimate at this time.
Okay.
However, you know, we do have a guideline set up.
Right.
In regards to that, the amount of hours officers can work within a week, within twenty-four hours, et cetera. So it'd be kinda hard to see how many people they would actually need and, without the scheduling and all that information. I really couldn't give you the estimate on that.
Okay, okay. Just, just was curious in asking, in asking that question. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, Alderman Lauer.
Yeah, I guess the one thing that I'd like to try to get clear in my, in my mind is what is your current demographic age? Are you, are you catering right now to eighty percent age, say, fourteen through twenty-one or are you seeing more forty to sixty or?
And that, that's tough to say in that location. It's so far out where, you know, there's, you have, it's a destination place, you have to go to that location. So, you know, I was out there multiple times and it seemed like there was an older crowd out there, there wasn't the, the younger kids, we weren't pulling from, you know, the college as much, but it seemed like, you know, the, the professionals wanted to go out there and enjoy a movie.
And, and so we're gonna change the business model, so your demographic is probably gonna change again. Is there an anticipation that you're going to have a large number of college-age kids or underage drinkers, et cetera?
I, I look at it as more family. We, that's the model we're looking at, to draw the families out there, destination place to be able to go and take your family there or the, the adults can go to an adult movie, the kids can go to a kid movie and.
So you're gonna, you're gonna split this up and you're gonna have different, obviously G-rated movies and maybe PJ and R?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, same as it is now, yeah, exactly.
Okay. My big, my big, my big drawback, just like Judy, I, typically I like to be very business-friendly and I, I like to encourage investment, especially in our community, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the additional exposure to the twenty-one and under age group because I know that those folks spend a lot of time in movie theaters. And it, it just seems to me that we're kinda closing off one more venue, that they can kinda go and not, not be exposed to this and, and now they're gonna have that exposure. So it's, it's something I've gotta weigh.
I'm sorry, Scott, I, last but not, we've, we've got like triple time on this, but go ahead.
It's an important topic and thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you guys for coming here, I really appreciate you showing up and, and speaking to this, this conversation point and the Rosemont location is an area that I used to grow up in, Mount Prospect area, so I remember when it opened, I don't know if you guys were managing it at that time, this was, no.
It was there two after, two years after it opened.
Okay, 'cause this would've been probably ten years ago, I remember I was in high school.
Seven and a half years ago.
The millennial. But my story, the, the reason I'm telling this is I remember I took a girl there and it was for a high school budget, outrageously expensive. It was cost prohibitive because you had all of the concerns you have with the additional training, the licensing, I mean, you, you're gonna see that in the model. I can't imagine anybody's going to be able to afford to go there and get soused. I mean, I don't know what your thing is, is gonna be with that, but, you know, we talk at a very high level about bringing businesses into the community and we talk about increasing our tax base and I think government should get out of the way in this case. I mean, we have a very aggressive liquor commission and you guys are gonna be under the microscope with this. You have come to a point where you're gonna be the first kind of trailblazers for this mo- model, if this were to pass, and you know that we're going to be keeping a very close eye. That being said, you know, I wouldn't worry that if there were any issues, I mean, even a single one, that the Liquor Commission would act very swiftly to address those types of issues. And that's why my fears are assuaged. I'd like to see different types of venues for entertainment. You know, we passed the entertainment tax, perhaps this will bring some people back out into the community and spend some dollars and have a good time. I'm looking forward to being there on opening night and seeing, you know, this new model, and whether it still is cost prohibitive to me or not, so. Thanks so much.
You can afford it now, yeah. And certainly, I mean, in terms of the entire region, I think that's the case. And so, I mean, to some degree, I think it is consistent with our city, quite consistent. I mean, if you can drink at Chuck E. Cheese, we've had a Castle Theater 12, 15 years ago. I mean, this is an exciting, I think, business model for us, but anyway. All right, I'll give you a minute.
One more real quick. Chief Hefner, I really appreciate what, you know, your, I think honesty. My concern is that the staffing on our police department is pushed, and another, yet another opportunity, and I don't, you know, need a comment at all, but to me, another opportunity for hireback, we have Walmart, we have, you know, on and on, could indeed present, you know, officers who maybe don't want to do that extra shift at the police department. And that's a big concern of mine, it's not the reason, though. My last thing is just, you know, you talk about families, it brings families out, and it just really, wow, I guess, you know, we've entered a new era where families think, gee, if mom and dad can't drink there, then they wouldn't go there. I mean, wow, that's really sad, really sad, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we're going to go ahead and vote. Okay, the motion carries 7-2, Madam Product, would you announce the nays?
The nays are Alderman Lauer and Sterns.
Okay. And let's go ahead and move on to item 7B, and that's the Illinois High Speed Rail, Chicago to St. Louis, impacts to Bloomington. We're going to have a brief presentation by Jim Karch, and then discussion for up to 30 minutes. And on that one, I'm going to have to, since that's kind of freewheeling, we're going to, I'll be a little tighter on that timeframe. Go ahead, Jim, thanks.
Mayor and City Council, I'll go ahead and jump right in here, as soon as I can pull up this presentation. We've all been hearing about the high-speed rail coming to Bloomington Normal, but also all across Illinois from St. Louis to Chicago. We've got, let's see here, $1.5 billion is being invested in this. $1.2 billion of that is coming from our funding, the rest is coming from state funding. The key, one of the key things that we all want to hear is that's no cost, direct cost to the city of Bloomington, out of our budget. I'm not sure why, Craig, you know why it's not popping up?
It was up for a second.
Maybe we don't have a high-speed connection. It's, there we go, okay. If it fades in and out again, we'll try it again, that's all right. Well, we're going to be hitting three different areas. The first one is, okay, this is going to keep me on my toes, that's okay. The first one is the Market Street Bridge replacement. The other ones we're going to be talking about are three at-grade crossings, Washington Street, Miller, and Six Points. The last area we're going to hit that impacts some of your constituents is going to be the fencing associated with the high-speed rail project. So let's jump right into the grade separation at the Market Street Bridge. And, yep, not sure, we're getting, we'll take a look as best we can up at the screen, those of you have your presentation with you, if you can, take a look at that, that'd be great as well. On the Market Street Bridge, this is the big component of the high-speed rail as it applies to city of Bloomington. What we're going to be looking at is closer to the end, late summer, they're going to start construction, it's going to be going for approximately a year. This is going to dramatically change the overall look of this area. So there's going to be a detour, there's going to be a major detour along here, that's going to send our residents up Hinshaw, down Locust, and then back on Lee. So it's going to be a long-term detour that IDOT, through the high-speed rail and Union Pacific, they're going to put that detour up, they'll maintain that. It's key, important to know that while this improvement will be very good, it doesn't change the fact that Locust is still the major, one of that major corridor to get all of our residents to the downtown. So that is a, that is a key corridor with an existing excellent bridge already in place. So one of the things that, if we, I don't know, can pay attention to the flashing up on the screen occasionally, we're all familiar with the murals. There's one mural on the Market Street Bridge that I'd like to just go ahead and proactively address. Quickly, if you look, on the north side, oh, there it goes, okay. On the north side of the road, there is a mural that's been there, and Alderman Schmidt, actually, you were involved directly in that Old Town neighborhood, weren't you back in the, no?
No, I am asking on behalf of a lot of residents who were.
Okay, well, you were around during that time period, and you can probably give us some history during comments on it, but whenever this was put in place, you can probably give a year, I'll turn to you and ask about that. But one of the things we've been asking, we've talked about, is, you know, can the mural be saved? You know, part of this project is going to be all of the abutments, the deckwork, all of that is going to be removed, it's going to go away. They're going to be putting back, if we can look up on the screen quickly, whoop, no, okay. There is a 44-foot clear span that's going to be a new clear span under the new. The top is what's existing, 33 feet across between the piers, and then the abutments, as you know, this, this north abutment is where that existing, that mural is at. The new cross-section is going to be dramatically different, it's going to be much more open, much more of a standard feel that people are used to with bridges. You're going to have a two-to-one slope coming up the sides and past the piers. So there's going to be a much better visibility, it's going to be a much more open feel for people going underneath there. One of the key components for this is going to be a third lane. That is important long-term for the city of Bloomington with Market Street. Currently, there's only two lanes, and while we won't utilize that third lane right now, bridges aren't there for 10 years, bridges aren't there for 20 years. This one was in the 1800s, late 1800s, when this one was built, bridges there for a long time, so you have to think long-term whenever you put up a bridge. So there will be pavement striping that marks out that lane, but in the long-term, it's going to be able to be used along Market Streets. That is a very big win, the city had to kind of encourage the railroad to consider whenever they, whenever they did these set of plans. But let's talk about the murals for just a second, I know we're tight on time, but that's something that matters to a lot of folks. We, right now, there is no money in the budget to replace or take out those murals, to put them someplace else, but we don't know of a good way to be able to salvage the murals, but staff is open to that, if there's some good ideas on how to do that, because that is a history for the city of Bloomington. And so, right now, the plan is they would just be removed, they would be completely torn out. Another thing that's been talked about is, you know, if there's old rails, there's a lot of history right along that corridor. And so, this, it's important to know that this work isn't being coordinated by the city of Bloomington, we don't put together the plans and specs, so, you know, we'll do everything we can to salvage things the council wants to do, but it's just good to know that there's no budget for that. Moving on, just wanted to show you briefly the overall detour route we talked about. You can see just basically, it's following along the state route, and that's the key. Let's talk, then, let's transition to the at-grade crossings. Washington Street is a key one for, as a community for us, it is one of the more higher average daily traffic crossings. And a key component of that that's good for the council to know, this was a big win for the city that we didn't know was going to be a win. They were only doing the high-speed rail on one of those tracks through there. Just to the west of that Washington Street crossing, many of you who travel there, you're familiar with the double bump, there's two more tracks to the west of it, that are in very poor shape. As part of this, staff was, Union Pacific wasn't laying claim to those, they weren't laying, these aren't our tracks. Well, we, our staff was able to, I give full credit to our staff, they dug in the records, we were able to find how the Chicago and Alton Railroad transferred over to the Union Pacific, and they took owner, okay, that is ours. And they agreed to go ahead, and while they're doing this high-speed rail, they agreed to go ahead, and we're very thankful for that, that they're going to improve those true tracks to the west, they're in very poor shape. So that is, that is a win as well, we see that as a positive thing. The last component of that is, we all know, and maybe you don't, this is good for everybody to know, whenever you try to do improvements within the railroad right-of-way, it is very difficult for staff. You have to get proper insurance, you have to have railroad flaggers, it is time-consuming and expensive. One of the things we are partnering with the railroad on with this Washington Street crossing is when they're in there doing that work, we're going to come in and, within the complete right-of-way, we're going to utilize the contract you just passed on the consent agenda, since it's an arterial road, and improve that, improve that crossing right there. We see that as a, as a win, to be able to utilize, when they're there with the flaggers and the railroad insurance, they're going to allow us to do that. So that will be a brand-new improved crossing whenever they're done. Let's move on to, actually, then, let's talk really quick about pedestrians. Washington Street on the north side is one that has a pedestrian crossing. Anytime pedestrians cross a high-speed rail, it is not something that is just done with a regular sidewalk. You have to have pedestrian gates, and you have to have an emergency exit. Up on the screen, you'll see a cross-section, I'll just go right to the view of what you, this is best to be able to see. This is eventually what that Washington Street crossing will look like. You'll see that there is a gate, separate gate, just for pedestrians that actually goes down, that prevents pedestrians from crossing, should a pedestrian, as they call it, get in that trap zone in between the rail and the gate, there is that, see that "Do Not Enter" sign on the right? Residents and citizens that get in that area can actually exit quickly, that is a one-way kind of gate that people can get out of that area in a safe zone. So that's good to know, that will be installed at Washington and Miller. If we talk about Miller, there's actually going to be more extensive work done on Miller, that's very, not just the pedestrian crossing on the north side like Washington Street, but also a lot of street work, which is a very positive thing for the city. They're going to be doing new curb and gutter and also asphalt. If we look at this from Partner Place down to Pancake Street, all of that will be redone. The reason for that is the change in the vertical grade. So the railroad has to match that vertical grade up to the tracks. So in order to do that, they have to go back so far, well, that's a win for the city, because then we get some new, we get some new infrastructure, and it also gets us out of their right-of-way. So in the future, we don't have to mess with that, that is a very difficult thing, as we talked about before. Six Points Road, this is one to where there will, and also be, even though there's no pedestrian crossing here, there is a lot of work, there's a lot of street work that goes all the way even up Alexander Road and back to the east, again, outside of that railroad right-of-way, which is a good thing. Whenever we talk about this, one of the key things that's good to know is that the crossing work will begin, it will begin not just with that, where they talk about separation work at Market Street, it's also going to begin late summer, and it's going to go into 2015. So that's where we talk about the Six Points, Washington and Miller, that's going to also go into 2015. A key thing for everybody to know is they won't close two consecutive crossings at the same time. So that's, that's a good thing, that hinders our citizens' emergency vehicle access, that's important for our fire department to know. So past that, it is, we've talked about that it's new curb and gutter and new asphalt work, but it's always good to say that again, because that's a positive thing. Fencing. The city staff just met this last Thursday with the HDR, they are the consultant that's working with the high-speed rail on the fencing. They are already contacting our citizens. Unfortunately, they would not provide to us a list of who they're contacting, or how, what level they are contacting, we made an official request and they were not able to provide that to us. But most of, they assured us that most of the people that they've contacted, Bloomington citizens, are actually working cooperatively, they're trying to find ways to make sure that they connect the new fencing up to what the existing fencing is. In many places, people have existing fences in their backyard that butt up against the railroad right-of-way. And anytime it's parallel, they're going and removing that and tying it into the high-speed rail fence. So also even, they're accommodating things such as pet fences, they're even putting lower fences down to be able to accommodate smaller animals. So they're, they're trying to accommodate residents, we haven't actually heard any complaints, but they have just talked to us on Thursday and let us know the majority of those conversations are going well. So as an update, it's good for you to know that. One of the other questions that's being asked is ornamental, this is the wrought iron fence. The majority of the work in Bloomington is six-foot wrought iron black fence, as you can see on the screen. Not all of it, though. In commercial areas, there are some areas to where it is not. You know, as we go through the rail yards, for example, it's chain-link fence, typically six-foot. In some spots, it is down to three-foot, whenever you come up the intersection, sight distances and the like. So again, normally residential is black wrought iron, commercial, open areas are normally then are chain-link fence. And so they're tying residents in as they come through, and that's at no cost to the citizens as well, and they're trying to accommodate them as best they can. So with that, I guess it would be, we all, the last thing is going to be a public meeting. We are working with IDOT, the Illinois Department of Transportation, to coordinate a joint meeting with McLean County, the town of Normal, and the city of Bloomington, in McLean County, so that we can have a joint meeting for all parties. And then, that is not scheduled yet, we're currently working with the other organizations to set that up. At this time, just if you have any questions, or City Manager, if you have any comments.
David, you want anything else before we open up to discussion for the council?
No, we just want to make sure that not only tonight or going forward, if there's any questions you have for staff, or you think your constituents might have, we'll do every, you know, our best to try and make sure that Union Pacific and their contractors are responsive to that. And I will give credit to Jim and the staff, because we've been pushing them for open meetings, public meetings, you know, trying to really do that. I don't think that was their plan. So we're trying to do everything so that people, if they want to come, just like with Enbridge, but come and talk to the railroad, IDOT, you know, or these other contractors, there'll be that opportunity. So we're glad that they have accepted that, but the date and time has yet to be determined, so.
Okay. Then we open up to comments, questions from the council, who'd like to go first. Alderman Sage.
Just one question, and Jim, I'm going to mix Normal and Bloomington here for a second. The crossings that you've mentioned, yeah, I think there's probably really limited pedestrian traffic or bike traffic. I'm thinking specifically about Miller Street, because I know there's a fair amount of foot and bike traffic from Alexander Road, and a lot of kids moving between there and Miller Park. At what point do we get into a situation where we have some type of an elevated overpass, like they have in Normal? I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand the, you know, the consistency there, if you will, or, you know, what trips that decision?
Yes, that's a good question. Those criteria are determined by the high-speed rail, they look at volume, pedestrian volume. Whenever they look at, you know, and again, not wanting to speak for the town of Normal, but in Uptown Normal where they have their station, the volume of traffic, the volume of pedestrian traffic far exceeds anything we have at any railroad crossings. But I don't have those numbers right now, but we can get those if you like, I'd be glad to provide that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand, at what point, I mean, if you've got gates, you've got locks, dams, whatever it is we're going to have there, I mean, at what point is that not sufficient, regardless of, you know, of the number of pedestrians that you have? Maybe just some, maybe that's something that we can incorporate into the public meeting or some explanation around that, maybe if we can.
We'll go ahead and provide some additional information on that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Alderman Lauer.
I just want to echo, I am a railroader kid, if you would, at 50-some years old. I grew up a father who was a Gulf Mobile and Ohio railroader, and et cetera, et cetera, as the liturgy went. A word of caution, though, he was very, very adamant about railroad safety and crossing safety and crossing technology and doing everything absolutely in our power to make it as safe as we possibly could. I'm very skeptical about high-speed pasture traffic, but I do think that there's a huge economic boon in terms of higher speed, higher speed freight traffic. And as it comes into play with our constituents and our citizens, I hope that there's something that the city of Bloomington can do to help educate exactly what's going to happen. We've experienced, I've seen the changes in Chinoa, I've seen the changes in Pontiac, I've seen the changes in Dwight, et cetera, where they've already made a lot of these grade changes, a lot of the overpass changes, a lot of the crossing changes, which is all a very good improvement. But what is it that we can do when we talk to the public and try to help educate? It is more dangerous every time we speed that train up another 10 miles an hour. And so, is there, is there suggestions, is there something that the railroad is going to do, et cetera?
Well, just from a standpoint of the railroad, Alderman Lauer, you're exactly right, I think they acknowledge that there are additional concerns with safety, and that is why they do a lot of the upgrades. A lot of those four quadrant gates are something that are standard, including the pedestrian gates, and that's not standard at a regular-speed rail. So those are some additional improvements, I think, that they try to incorporate, but again, we all know that's not foolproof.
Okay. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jim, for the presentation. Two things, and one, you had mentioned the issue with the mural, and I appreciate you being proactive about that. Just a thought that came into my mind as we kind of discussed what we, how we move forward would be to, maybe the city could host a fundraiser or some type of, you know, community engagement so we're not necessarily leaning on tax dollars to preserve that cultural aspect. So, that's something that I think would be, in my own opinion, a good route to go. The second one, I wanted to go back to the slide that you had with the at-grade pedestrian crossing. So, the suggested one with Washington and Miller Street. And this goes back to Alderman Sage's comments, and there is a lot of bike traffic, foot traffic down that way. And I know that those are two modes of transportation. They're very popular, but I've seen a lot of people out recently doing skateboarding, scooters, and one idiot Alderman who likes to rollerblade. So, I worry with this that it's, would there be like a post that one could grab onto? Because if you're coming in hot and the gates go down, what would the options be for someone on a different mode of transportation? Do you see what I'm saying? Because on the trail, you have those, those like wooden, I don't know, I guess pillars that are kind of there that you can grab a hold of. And I have seen some kids that are about to go in the middle of the street that they grab onto that when they're on their scooters, and that'd be something I would like to see.
One of the things we can look into is typically with rail crossings like this, and this is not an area of expertise of mine, but just from seeing it, normally you have a, first a audio indication that the gates are going to close.
Sure.
And then you have the visual for the gates closing. So, you know, typically you'll have some sort of little precursor about them that they're going to be closing, and hopefully at that point you can, or any other Alderman on the rollerblades can, you know, put their breakdown.
I'm the only one.
Right? Can put the breakdown on it.
Keep it that way. It's dangerous.
Yeah.
I took a tumble the other day.
So, in other words, you're saying it's unlikely that, because it's not, if you're on rollerblades and you're going quickly, by the time you hear and see that and the thing comes down slowly, it's pretty much a zero probability that you're going to be in that twenty-foot space.
Sure.
I will never say that it is not possible. There's always a.
I find a way.
It is, it will be, the timing would have to be really good, but I'm, you know, it's, it's.
But on a higher level, I mean, I worry about, you know, you get people who are going to be piling up there, especially if it, I know it's a high-speed rail, but if it's near a stop, you might have some, you know, time where people are waiting for it to cross there. I mean, that could potentially be the case, and it'd be nice to see some sort of a rail or a pillar to hold onto for those folks, not just me, but on a high level.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. If we could also, with that mural, one thing, it's just good for discussion that we've talked about is although the, underneath the bridge will go back at a two-to-one in the future, the city could have the possibility of retaining wall on the east side, on the north, there'll be a smaller retaining wall closer to six-foot, so it's not nearly as tall as the other, you know, location. But, you know, the retaining wall that will be maintained by the railroad. It is owned and maintained by the railroad, so there would have to be an agreement with them that we could do that. But maybe we could look to have another local artist capture what's there now and recreate it or something like that. You could try to find some inventive way to do that. That's just a thought.
Other comments? Sehna, thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate it. Now, as we move on to item seven C, I do have a, this was my understanding, my observation, I will check this with our corporate counsel and city manager. This is NICOR Gas Utility Audit. We're just going to have a presentation by Alex McElroy and then some reaction by council. What we have is a memorandum under seven C. We are not voting. I had a request by Alderman Sterns that she might need to recuse herself if we were actually going to be voting. We're not voting on anything. This is just for information and a discussion.
And I'd like to have Alex McElroy, the assistant to the city manager, come up. But let me just mention, one reason we're bringing this to you tonight is in the city manager's fiscal year 2015 action plan, we're going to continue to try and do some major revenue audits. And Alex is going to talk a little bit about why these audits are so important because as we look at our finances, both now and in the future, one of our goals is to help ensure that we're getting a hundred percent of all the revenue that the council has adopted by ordinance, whether it be a utility franchise tax, sales tax, and so forth. We just haven't had the personnel or the resources to do these kind of audits in the past. In fact, it's still going to be difficult going forward. But what we did try to do is pick one of the, maybe a little bit more easier audits to do this, and so Alex is just going to make a brief presentation and share why these types of audits are important, why there needs to be an ongoing recurring program to look at these, not just a one-time, you know, affair. So, Alex, if you go ahead.
Yes, thank you, city manager. We'll see how long my PowerPoint can last. I only have five slides, so we can get through pretty quickly. Why are we bringing this to you? This is actually an action item on the city manager's action plan, item number nine. We're bringing it to you because we told you that we would bring it to you. We said that we would look at all our utility taxes, which includes electricity, natural gas, telecommunications, and then also our sales tax. What are some of the benefits of going through this, this practice? Number one, it ensures that we are collecting everything fairly and thoroughly throughout the community. What we're also doing is we're ensuring that we're collecting a hundred percent of the taxes that we do leverage before we begin to look at new revenue streams. Some of the reasons that we need to continually look at these accounts, municipal boundaries change, new annexes happen, new businesses come in, new residential housing growth occurs. So, those are some factors that would, that would require us to continually monitor our accounts. I also did some research when we were conducting the audit, and I found back in 1993, Oklahoma City actually did an audit on their sales tax, and they found forty-five million dollars worth of uncollected revenues based on eight years of misinterpretation of their own city code. So, there's certainly big examples of why you should go through this due diligence. Luckily, we did not experience that magnitude of a findings. What we looked at were the thirty-five thousand-plus accounts you see there at the bottom in bold. The biggest of those thirty-five, we found two-hundred-and-fifty-three discrepancies that, based on our databases, we then went back to NICOR and asked them, why is ours, why is our account different than your account in these situations? And this is a breakdown of those two-hundred-and-fifty-three. One-hundred-and-ninety-four of those were simply we had an address and they didn't, and we wanted to figure out why they didn't have the address we did. Some of the examples included that there simply wasn't a meter at that address, so there wasn't a need in their system to have an address in that account. Others were that the property actually had electric heat, so there wasn't the need to have a meter there either. We did add eight new accounts. One was actually plucked from Normal, although it wasn't in Normal, they just thought it was. Seven were also identified that were marked unincorporated, and they actually were incorporated in the city of Bloomington. We, we did lose about forty. We found most of our discrepancies around the borders of our city, and we were able to clean those up as well. The exceptions at the bottom are actually city properties, which are exempt from the tax. For analysis, a lot of the credit needs to be given to our GIS specialist Troy Olson. He's a very busy person. He, we go to him for all our GIS needs, and this was one that he really helped the city in getting. We got our databases from NICOR. We then tried to figure out how we could compare them to our GIS systems, and he was very pivotal in being able to provide the technical expertise to be able to do that. For the most part, we have found our accounts are fairly accurate. There was zero-point-one percent of the accounts were found to be incorrectly classified. Some of the issues we found, again, there was a lot of technical difficulties with the Excel file type that we received from NICOR, and then bringing that over into a GIS framework. We had to do a lot of manipulation with the, the file to get it to be able to do an automated search, so we weren't going through thirty-five thousand-plus accounts manually. We wanted to be able to automate that process at some level. Things like trailer courts were a little different and difficult. A trailer court could actually move from one location, a new one could come into the exact same lot, but not decide it liked the street frontage if it was on a corner so they could reposition it to face another street and would have a brand-new address. So, those were some discrepancies with some of the accounts that we had to deal with. Other things were street monikers, like road-streetway. They may have had it as a road, we had it as a street, so those were part of the two-hundred-and-fifty-three that we had to go through more manually and made it a little more time-consuming. And I believe that's it.
Let me just add one or two more things. As Alex indicated, mistakes and errors do happen, you know, as complex as these get. And, you know, when you talk about thirty-five thousand addresses, annexations, things of that nature, that happens. I think many of us have read that up in the Chicago area, many of the companies to take advantage of lower sales tax rates were shifting their so-called address for the corporation to some of these outlined rural cities that had a low sales tax rate, yet most of their businesses was being done in the city of Chicago. It does bring up the point that some of these audits do require a lot of legal assistance and help as we try to look at what does our ordinance say? How is the company complying with that? Do things need to be updated in the way of our ordinance? And we found some of those already from Mr. Jurgens and some of his recommendations on collecting on hotel-motel taxes. But my final comment is we are reaching out to the community. We are trying to see if there's other partners, other businesses in the community, or other ways we can capitalize on interns or other help to see if people can assist us. Because again, it can be very time-consuming. Yes, there's a lot of maybe routine work, but there can be some complexity. So, we're trying to still put together that plan for these other audits so that hopefully we can do as much as we're setting out for, and, and we're, hopefully, we'll, who knows? If we could even pick up one million dollars in, in new revenue, we hope that. And lastly, I think some of the Aldermanic Subcommittee might have heard, there is some companies that will come in and do this for us. However, what they want is a huge commission. Some of them are looking from forty to fifty percent of the savings we might identify. We're trying to capture a hundred percent of the savings by use of working with others. So, we're trying to do this on the cheap, but also do it in a very professional and accurate way. We'll see and come back and present further reports to you in the future as we continue with this auditing program.
So, this is one of those times we are definitely not going with outside consultants.
No, at this point in time, we want to do it all in-house.
Keep all the savings. Okay. Questions? Comments? Got a little bit of time budgeted.
Real quick, we recommended that we do this test again in three years, and based on the number of items you found and the fact that you now have a system, wouldn't it be a better idea to do it in one year? And if it looks really clean, then, then start doing every three years?
In the, in the report, the recommendation was at a minimum three years. So, if resources are available every year, it would make sense as well.
Alderman Lauer?
Sure. Could you, city manager Hales, tell us about the other areas that you're looking at?
Yes, as we kind of, let's say, go back to the one, that action plan, because I think that lists some of these electrical service, Ameren and Corn Belt will be another one. There is also Comcast, cable, telecommunications. There's more restrictions when you get into that. And then the last one, the big one, would be sales tax. That can be even more tricky because it, you know, we get into definitions and physical address, corporate headquarters. So, we hope, it depends on the resources we have, and we'll do some preliminary review to see with legal help and finance help what's maybe the next target. So, right now, we're trying to come up with the resources and the priority as we continue on with this program.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alex. Very much appreciate it. Now, moving right along to our last item, item seven D, is Coliseum Development Managed Agreement, and this is ticket facility fee and commissions. And city manager was to give us an update by the end of June, and this is our update. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hales.
Yes, we provided to you just a little memo. We have reached out, and we're still in the process of putting together a memorandum of understanding, which we will bring back to the council. However, that's a, something that is currently in the process of being worked out with the two attorneys, together with utilizing our finance and SIAM staff to help ensure that the, these items we mentioned are specifically addressed. I just might bring again to your attention in the trade commission, the current agreement does allow SIAM to take up the ten percent commission on sponsorships, but they have voluntarily during the life of this contract only been taking a five percent commission on trade-type contracts. And so, we're working on to memorialize that in writing so that that is very specifically spelled out. There is trade agreements, and then there's cash agreements out there. So, we think that, we certainly feel that it's appropriate that we kind of, with their approval, continue that. And then we also provided additional information on the fifty-cent parking fund allocation. Keep in mind that we no longer have a separate parking revenue fund. Right now, all our, our parking garages pretty much are in the general fund, and that was because these parking garages are not revenue generators. They do not turn a profit. They're heavily subsidized, both in initial construction and in operating costs on an ongoing basis. The benefits are more regional in nature, especially as we've seen in our own downtown. But we believe that the past history was, they wanted to try and take part of the surcharge and divert it to be a revenue source to help with maintenance of the specific Pepsi Ice Center garage. Jeff Jurgens has been instrumental in assisting us with this, as well as Patty Lynn. Again, this is an update, a status report, but we'll bring back the full memorandum to you in the near future. Be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Jurgens is here as well.
Alderman Sterns?
Thank you. And possibly Jeff Jurgens is in some, I don't see anyone here from SIAM. My interest in this, last time it came up at council when we talked about the hockey licensing and all, was for transparency, that our citizens would really have a much better understanding of how, we have a private company that is very dependent on city funds, so we have an issue of, you know, the privacy of a private company with the city being very, very much affected by how that business goes. And I did bring some questions. We got this item very late today, or just today. And my questions may be a little bit broader, but my concern is that the citizens really understand essentially, you know, how management fees, how commissions are calculated, and what they actually are. And I'd like to just start with something that's here in the agreement. SIAM is entitled to take ten percent commissions on sponsorship suites, advertising, et cetera. Is that, is that right, Mr. Jurgens? Is that, is that exactly right?
Yeah, there are various provisions within the agreement that allow for commissions by SIAM. And if you look in there, there's several specific ones that set forth ten percent. The trade commissions are not as clearly set forth, and so that's why, as part of their past practice, has it taken five percent? And we talked about the reasons that they take a little lower commission on that, but a lot of these other commissions are set directly at ten percent.
Okay. And I had some, I did some math, so forgive me, but I looked at the 2013 report, which is the last full year that we actually have. And, and what I'm seeing is that indeed, there is ten percent, although I'm not exactly sure how it's calculated. Off of that report, I see one-point-three million in membership suites, sponsorships, and naming rights. And I believe that if we look to the ten percent, we're looking over here at SIAM commissions, which comes to one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, which is just a little bit higher than ten percent. But there again, there could always be a variance. I'd like to know exactly, you know, where that ten percent comes from. But here's even a bigger question. Okay. So, we have SIAM commission, and then we have management fees. And if I've calculated, I mean, this is just a two-page, it's pretty simple to read. If I've calculated the management fees, we're looking at total revenue four percent. And the revenue that we're basing that on is from the entire, all of the income, all of the revenue. And what I'm adding up, what I'm seeing here is that membership suites, sponsorships, and naming rights also go into the four percent. So, we're taking four percent off all of this, that's our management fee. And then we're taking SIAM commission off membership suites, sponsorships, and naming rights. So, it looks to me like we're taking fourteen percent, but of course, I'm only reading the report and doing some math, so, you know, who knows? I did write up some questions, and I will pass them out to the council. I've already given them to the media. But for me, the concern, and I don't know if you have an answer on that?
No, I'll work with.
John?
Hey, let me back there.
Yeah, and that would be great.
I'll get the numbers right.
That would be, that would be great. I've kind of written them down here and even cited the numbers. Couple other things, though, real quick. I don't know that we have any way at all of auditing the concessions, but I do believe we own the software to do that. Do you have, is that a familiar topic to you?
No, it's not.
Okay. Well, I believe the city spent almost two-hundred thousand on the software to audit the concessions, which of course, another private company owned by BMI, but I don't believe we have monthly reports on the concessions. Are you aware of that, David? Or do you know anything about concessions?
No, I'm not aware of any monthly reports, but I am, you know, as the council, we do audit the Coliseum with SIAM each year in detail, and the auditors get. And the auditors get in and look at all the subsidiary ledgers, everything that goes into any of these numbers, whether it be commissions or management fees. And the auditors are always a great resource as we bring them here for the council to ask and see if everything is, you know, in agreement as they have determined.
Right. Thank you very much, David. And we're fully aware that the auditors' report, I mean, it's great to address the trade, the sort of the in-kind trade-offs, I mean, I agree, it's very, very vague, but the auditors' report that I read, and I read at council, and I forgot to bring tonight, very clearly, I mean, yeah, these are great issues to bring up, but it very clearly says the commissions and the fees are ambiguous, undefined. I don't think we've even really defined revenue and how we calculate that. So, you know, this is great tonight, and I'll certainly support it, but I really would like to see a hard look at exactly, you know, for our citizens, where the SIAM commissions, where the management fees and all of that, how it's calculated, and frankly, what it is. Because even our salaries at 1.3 million going to the Coliseum, to me, look like a huge percentage of the total revenue, which is some 3 million something. So those are the kinds of numbers that, you know, I'd like to see. And if anyone, I'll just put these in your boxes and give, you one, Jeff, and I've already given one to the press. So look forward to some answers on that, and I will support this, and thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to comment too. It's, you know, we don't take ownership of this agreement. This agreement goes back to 2003, 2004. It's something we inherited. As we also pointed out, in about a year and a half, this particular agreement will expire. There will be some provisions for renewing that. We see a great opportunity for this staff and this council to be very involved in clarifying, being more specific, getting at many of these issues. But again, I think there is, it's highly questionable, I think, as to how much we begin to try to re-justify this whole agreement, everything that is currently in place, to arrive at these numbers. Once again, it's, I think there's some improvement that can be made, but we are focusing on those two specific issues as the auditors define in their management letter, and that's what we're bringing back to the council. Where I think the Alderman is trying to, you know, is raising a lot of questions, but I don't think we have.
Yeah, I mean, as I understood what Judy was saying, I don't think she was asking for justification. I think she's just asking for some numbers. And that's probably particularly important now as we move forward. But I'm going to let, turn it over to Alderman Lauer.
Yes, just as a follow-on, I think from a professional management standpoint, I just don't think we're getting what we're paying for here, very thorough management, at least to our appearance. I would ask for a much greater detail in trend analysis, year to year, in terms of profit and loss, and in terms of management fees and accruals, that they're actually earning, or maybe they should be earning, or maybe they aren't quite earning. Okay? And so I think it gets into really justifying the language that we've got to deal with for the next year and a half, trying to go forward, and then learning from where we've been when we write the next contract. It doesn't appear to me that we've really upheld the contract in some areas. And in other areas, the management may not be upholding the current contract. And so moving forward, I would hope that we could reach a much more well-defined agreement where we know exactly where we're going to be, they know exactly what's expected of them, et cetera. And I would like to see a little bit more in-depth analysis of the point of sale, which is what Judy was talking about. Private business has been using this for probably two decades now, and they can identify even income streams from each serving location and the time thereof. And they can do trend analysis in terms of what can be done to improve each one of those stations. And so I don't think we're even looking at that. I'm not sure that the management is looking at that. I'm not sure that they've even accrued those. And so we're not using the software that we purchased, okay? And I realize that some of this is classified, but there again, we could have management people inside our city actually looking at this and keeping that close to the vest, okay? So that we had a much better feeling in terms of our community and what we've invested in, okay? And what we continue to invest in, and whether it's paying off, or how better may we help it to pay off. So those are just, just some basic thoughts, I guess, in terms of moving forward here. I'm asking for a lot more than we've been given, and I realize this is difficult, but again, we've gone through probably close to a decade of expense here, and we're not really seeing the return on investment that we would have typically expected, okay? So I guess that's the critical side of things. Thanks.
Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just want to weigh in very briefly here. I appreciate the questions that we're asking. I think that they're the right questions, and I certainly understand David's approach here, that this is a contract. I wasn't involved in selecting it in 2003. I don't know what the issues were at the time and why the council came to the decision that it did. I like to try to imagine that they had as good of intentions as we do today, and there were issues at the time that it seemed like an advantageous contract. That being said, it seems to me like we've gotten a lot of feedback from the public and the council of the direction that the agreement we wanted to go in, and in terms of accountability, in terms of the, being able to trace where the dollars are flowing. So I'm very much looking forward to revisiting the renewal of that contract, and I'm looking forward to council participation in that, because that's where we really can revisit a lot of these hard-hating questions, and we should get as much data as we possibly can to the council and to the public. But being aware of the fact that we are under contract under certain things, and there are some things we're just not going to have an answer to, but that might be the staging ground for how we move forward for the next time. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, at this point then, do we have a motion? We don't, you don't need us to do anything with this at all?
Just information.
Just, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, well, then we're going to move on to the City Manager's discussion. Mr. Hales.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'd like for two individuals. First, Craig Cummings, if you would stand for a minute. Tonight will be the last opportunity we have in a council meeting to recognize the service provided by Craig Cummings as Director of the Water Department. His last day will be July 7th. He's leaving for a job in Arlington, Texas. You know, it's always been impressive, as I first got to know Craig. He has some very significant technical expertise in education, environmental biology, total quality management, other certifications. And that knowledge has been critical as he's come to the city. Just a couple of key accomplishments. As many of you have seen, the city, as I understand it, back when Craig got here, the fire hydrant, unfortunately, we had, it was in deplorable condition. The firefighters oftentimes would roll up to a fire hydrant, it wasn't working, or there wasn't a maintenance going on. Now we know how many hydrants we have. We have an annual testing program. We've not only replaced a lot of hydrants, but I think for the community's benefit, we have almost 100% fire hydrants that are ready to serve the needs of our firefighters. That is a critical public safety turnaround that I think is to the credit of Craig. Also during his tenure, completed the Source Water Strategic Plan, which we're using as we plan going forward. Also implemented online billing payment, which I think almost about a third or something of our customers. The big pipeline road project, a lot of progress. Passed a drought, or the council adopted a drought ordinance and helped us get through the 2012 drought. And then lastly, in 2000, the City of Bloomington Water Department was the first recipient of the 2014 Source Water Protection Award. So I think since 2003, we have really benefited from Craig's leadership and all he and his staff have accomplished. We really wish him well as you move on to Arlington, Texas. And we do know that this will bring he and his family a little closer to grown children that work for State Farm in the Phoenix area, one of those so-called hubs that are being built around the nation. So I, I don't know if you had anything you'd like to say, but after you're done, we certainly want to give you a round of applause and appreciation. So any quick comments?
I thank you very much, City Manager Hales, and I appreciate the support that I've had from this council, the mayor. And I will miss the City of Bloomington. I've considered it home, had kids go through the schools here, and have had a wonderful time here at the City of Bloomington. So thank you all.
Please join me in giving our round of applause. Next, I'd like to ask John Kennedy to come forward. As just learned Friday afternoon, John Kennedy has accepted a position in the, in the city of Gilbert, Arizona, a very large metropolitan, a very fast-growing community down there, known for being very family-oriented. His last day with the city will be July 4th. He will be serving as the, I think, one of two second-in-commands in the city's large Parks and Recreation Department. You know, over the years, John and his wife have not only talked about moving to someplace warm, but, you know, John is one of these people that have a lot of motivation. When we look around, any organization sometimes has some high-performing individuals. They're very much on the, they're very technologically oriented, they're looking for ways to improve. And I certainly have relied on John and his council and advice since I appointed him as the Parks Department Director back in 2006. He's actually been an employee since 1997, and was an accomplished golfer, maybe still is, if you ever get time to get out on the course. But, you know, it is interesting. John's wife, Laura, also works for State Farm. And of course, we know State Farm has a hub down in the Phoenix area that may come into play. You know, some of the accomplishments of John is he led the reorganization and merger of the Parks and Recreation and the Cultural District Departments. We went from two directors to one. So John oversaw that merging of the Cultural District Organization into the Parks and Recreation to create this combined department. Helped to see through and had the, and the council adopted the Parks Master Plan back in 2009. And during the past five and a half years, two neighborhood parks has been developed, Gaelic and Eagle View. We've also, he negotiated a memorandum of understanding between the zoo and the Miller Park Zoological Society, and also has worked on some other notable achievements. And last but not least, I want to mention the Zoo Master Plan, which also, working with Jay Tetzloff, our zoo director, is something that he, working with the Miller Park Zoological Society, has helped seen through to fruition. John has been a tireless and dedicated director to the city. I know in the many discussions we've had, he has given 110%, and we see this as a great opportunity for John as he continues to chart his next stage in his career in the Parks and Recreation field. So if you'd like to, any comments you'd like to finish, John, before?
Thank you, City Manager Hales, and certainly I'll echo Craig's comments and appreciate the support from the council and David and all of our staff. We have a great staff, a great group of directors, a great staff in our department. For reasons aren't too hard to figure out, there were three areas that I was kind of looking at. One's Atlanta. I lived in Atlanta, Illinois. I didn't need to live in another Atlanta, I didn't think. The other one is Dallas, and if you have a name like mine, I didn't think that was a good fit. So that left, that left the Southwest. So it's certainly a bittersweet day when I will leave, because this is a great community. I've never moved more than 50 miles away, so a 1,600-mile move is rather daunting in my mind at times, but excited for new opportunity, but extremely thankful for all the support and everything here. So, thank you very much.
Please join me in giving John a round of applause. And now I have an announcement. No. These are some very talented people we have working with you. I just want to add that I sent out an email today. Katie Bidos and her wife, Jeff, are going to be heading out west. They're die-hard.
Her husband.
Her husband, Jeff, excuse me. Her husband, Jeff, are die-hard outdoor mountain bikers. He has a booming, you know, photography business, and they're going to be entrepreneurs. They're going out there into property or land that they just have taken a real love for. And boy, it's just amazing, it's kind of interesting to see young people who are willing to take that big risk and leap out there.
She's leaving?
Yes.
Yeah, you were on the plane.
I was on the plane.
Not for a couple of weeks, but I just.
From the Grassy Knoll in Dallas.
Unfortunately, I think, yeah. Before we have another council meeting, I think the last day's around the 11th, but we have, she's, I think she was one of my first hires as I came here, and will, sorry to see her leave, but again, it's, you know, it's, I think it has to do with youth sometimes. It's some of these young people that just don't have that desire to stay in one place for very long. But we really have some dedicated employees, and, you know, we just thank them for all their years of service and wishing them the best in their careers and with their family and health. So thank you so much. So that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And I just have a few things. I want to first of all, thank a couple of our Aldermen for filling in for me as, one, I was gone to the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Dallas, a few, just two blocks from the Grassy Knoll, John Kennedy. Anyway, and I want to thank Alderman Scott Black for taking the mayoral open house on Friday. I appreciate that. And I do want to chat with you a little bit more about what some people had brought to your attention. And I want to thank Alderman Karen Schmidt for chairing our executive committee. I was supposed to be back, but because of the weather in Dallas, my flight was delayed. Both Chris Kuss and I, of course, Chris didn't have a meeting tonight, so he wasn't as nervous as I was, sitting in the airport, wondering when we were going to leave. But thank you, Karen. Also, just as part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, I did not go to the meeting in January, I did go to the one a year ago, and I found it really fascinating. There are very few people who are there that don't serve communities roughly of our size. I think Chris Kuss represents one of the smaller cities, 50,000, 55,000 on up. So they tend to be metro, medium to small metro cities, and some of the larger cities as well. And we've got many of the same kinds of common problems and issues that many of our neighbors do. I'm on one of the, you get to be on two committees. I'm on one that's Transportation and Infrastructure, and we dealt with a lot of different issues and resolutions. One actually happened to involve a net neutrality that Michael Gorman had brought to my attention a couple of times in our mayoral open houses. And that resolution I was texted, did pass without any dispute. And this is a group of 250 mayors with a lot of egos, and nobody dissented from net neutrality. And also, we had a broader theme. Kevin Johnson, who's a Sacramento mayor, who is the newly-elected president, talked about Cities 3.0. Then we've had Cities 1.0, where we basically had the horse-and-buggy era. Cities 2.0, which was the Industrial Revolution that later led to more advanced forms of transportation at that point, with street cars, and then ultimately, in some cases, you know, automobile-based cities. And now Cities 3.0, which are e-cities, where we've got e-government, e-commerce internationally linked at all levels. People expect us to do all kinds of things, and there are lots of really, really cool things that you can do with apps, from potholes to anything that, in terms of service delivery, and ways to try to make things, again, we've talked about even more transparent, taking documents the moment that you get them, scanning them, putting them out on the internet. People don't have to fill out FOIA requests. There are lots of things that are certainly, that are happening. So anyway, it was a great conference, and except for the trip back, I generally had a good time and learned a lot. Thank you, and that's all I have. My, oh, yes.
Can I, I forgot. One piece of homework. Some maps were provided to you. We need your help. One of the contracts you approved tonight is the extra $1 million in small-area street resurfacing. As you might recall, we want to focus on arterials, collectors. Jim has provided to you not only a map of some of that $10 million work, but also where our Street Operations Division is going to be doing some permanent pothole patching. What we're looking for, and as our staff, we'll be preparing a list of small-area street resurfacing as part of this $1 million. We would ask you, please, look in your ward and see if there is some areas in your ward that have not been identified as part of the city's in-house permanent pothole patching. And if you think the city engineering staff should consider that for this $1 million contract, please. should consider that for this $1 million contract, please provide the public works that kind of information. And I think we all drive them, we see them, we continue to drive on, then we forget about them, but we thought it'd be helpful for you to see what we are going to do with the in-house staff, the big streets, so please, if you have any questions, get ahold of Jim and the engineers, because we are looking for help to build that list of small projects as part of that $1 million contract. Thank you, sorry.
And just in terms of potholes, one of the things that, and Jim Karch may already know about this, some of the cool apps is that they have, if you take a picture, it instantly tells you where it is, a GPS locator, and you can send it, and then it goes on your city's, in your city's, you know, pool, and you can basically have potholes filled within 24, 48 hours in some places, they're claiming, once they're on the, you know, the system. So those are just a few of the cutting edge things.
Did they filter off you for that?
I don't know. Okay, well, I'm going to start with Alderman Fruant, and then we have five of us, I guess, five people.
Very quickly, as we were talking about dates, it reminded me, and I think 4th of July will come and go before we meet again, and I thought about John and his department and what they've done, and I think what City of Bloomington does at 4th of July, from sunup to sundown and beyond, the fireworks, is just a real nice day in City of Bloomington. So, thanks to the entire Parks and Rec Department and all the other departments that helped facilitate that day, so it's a great day. Best of luck to John and to Craig.
That's great. And just as an FYI, also with private funding to supplement our stuff. Alderman Fazini.
It's working. Two things, the EDC is hosting its quarterly business, Bloomington Normal by the Numbers on the 26th of this month at ISU alumni center. It's an excellent way to learn a lot about the community and a good overview, goes from 11:30 till 1 for anyone who can make it. And the second thing, I'd like to get us, see us all get together for some sort of an executive session before we have our next meeting, which won't be for two and a half, three weeks. I don't know how we arrange that, Mayor, but I'd like to have that happen.
Okay. Thank you. And Alderman Sterns.
I just wanted to thank David, the Police Department, for coming to my neighborhood meeting, Franklin Park, Kevin Lauer. We had a wonderful group, and Mayor, you were out of town, right, unfortunately, but we did have a very nice group of the neighbors in Franklin Park, and by the way, David, several more people came, a lot of people came late, and so there was a lot of opportunity to talk to a lot of people. And it's all about the neighborhood having the decision-making for what's going to happen, you know, in their neighborhood. And I thank Jeff and Frank for helping me enormously with the legalities of the 405 East Locust location, David, obviously, what can and cannot be there. And the long and short of it is that a convenience store is, there's a lot of issues, but apparently would actually require spot zoning, not just a special-use permit, not just, you know, some kind of variance, but actually rezoning because of the prior use. And I'm not going to expand, if anybody's interested, by all means, let me know. But the good thing is that the neighbors came out and they feel that the city is hearing them and understanding. You know, it's not about what somebody else wants, it's about them, because they've invested, they live there, and that's, you know, all, I know you're going to keep me posted as things progress, but very, very encouraging to hear your support, David, you know, that the neighbors will indeed be the decision-makers, and certainly, you know, I, in any of your neighborhoods, support that, I try to, unless it's a major expenditure, like a half a million or more, and then, you know, the parks and such, but really, really support, if at all possible, the neighbors being the decision-makers. And one, just real quick, my concern with the Coliseum is all about transparency. It's all about understanding, not just for me, for the council, but for the citizens of Bloomington, to understand how the money's spent, where it goes, where it comes back, and why our profitability or lack thereof is what it is. Thank you very much.
Alderman Lomway.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this Saturday, I presented a proclamation to the African-American Forum on your behalf, I don't know if you knew.
I forgot to thank you about that, Juneteenth, sorry.
Yes, that's right, Juneteenth, so, but it was a fun event, I was there for about an hour. I heard that last year you gave a fiery speech. The only thing fiery about that day was that it was hot, at least for me, and so it really was a great event, just a great opportunity to mix and mingle with people in the community who are doing a great job. I think this is an event that's put on by volunteers, and they don't get any other reward from it, you know, no monetary reward or anything like that, and I think it's great for the community to have that sort of goodwill from people, so thank you, it was a lot of fun.
Thank you about that, yeah. Actually, I just gave, there's a two-and-a-half-minute segment of probably one of King's best speeches, which is the How Long Speech, I think it's one that people should hear more often, so anyway, they didn't hear it this year.
From memory.
Alderman Sage. Couple of notes of thanks, David wanted to thank you, as well as Jim Karch. We had a meeting at Luther Oaks last week, and related to Lutz Road and some engineering work that's moving towards wrapping up there, and so it was a great presentation by Jim Karch, and much appreciated by the folks there at Luther Oaks, so, and again, we hear all the time, it's important to recognize that the previous city manager did not get out and engage in the community the way that you do, that just simply didn't happen. And so, I don't want to lose sight of that, kind of that contrast and that difference. That was something we talked with you about early on, and you have done that, and Steph has done that as well. The other thing is that I had the opportunity to be at the zoo for the first time in several years, this past Friday, took my granddaughter out there, that was her first trip to the zoo, and John, what Jay and his staff have done out there is just remarkable. I've been there, haven't been there for a few years, just the noticeable upgrade in appearance, the professionalism of the staff, the junior zookeeper program, I mean, it was just, it was just a complete day, man, and so I just wanted to give you a shout-out for that, because it was, it was a tremendous, and dozens of families, I mean, just dozens and dozens of families, and different activities, presentations in the little theater, the feedings, everything, it was fabulous, so, again, pass along my appreciation and acknowledgement of Jay and his team's work out there. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Sage. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Is that moved?
Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini, all in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.